All right. All right, welcome everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 8th to our Watsonville City Council. My name is Ari Parker. I am mayor and we will start with roll call.
Utra.
Here.
Sada.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hurst.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Kidos Carter.
Here.
Parker.
Here. Thank you. Alrighty. We don't have a motion to excuse absent council members because there is none. And then we have the pledge of allegiance. Do we have anybody who'd like to volunteer? Okay, let's pledge. Then if you would please. I'll stand and have the computer go with me. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And informational items, there was a report of dispersments. If the council has any questions, clarifications, that was for us. And then any written reports by council members regarding actions taken on their regional commissions that may affect the city of Watsonville. Does anybody have one of those? Okay, and we will remember we can submit those. Presentations and oral communication. So this time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not in the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff as matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion in future meeting. Or refer to staff for clarification and reports. So please, everyone, all speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes and we are moving to oral communications from the public. And madam clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes. Serge.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor and city council. My name is Serge Cagno and I'm on the county's mental health advisory board. I sent you guys an email and a flyer inviting you to our upcoming meeting on February 17th. We have Dr. Kenneth Minkoff coming to present and he was a co-chair of what's now a nationally recognized report called Roadmap to the Ideal Crisis System. The, it's a 200-page rather long report, but there are some links for the 10-page executive summary and a 10-minute video explaining it. The great parts about it are bringing together all the constituents, the jurisdictions, municipalities, the nonprofits, the community to do an assessment of the system and find where we're doing great and where the gaps are. So I'm really hoping that the city of Watsonville will be a part of this ongoing series of town halls so that we can solve what everybody's needs are. Yep. That's all I've got to say. Thanks. And I can answer questions if you have.
Well, thank you, Serge. And if we have your letter, we will look at it again. Thank you very much for coming to speak. Do we have any other speakers?
I don't see anyone. If anyone wants to speak, please raise the digital hand that I can allow you to speak. There's no one.
Okay, well then we'll move on. We have oral communication from council. And if we could, we will begin with Councilman Estrada.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to welcome the public. Thank you for joining us this evening here at city council. I, before I began, I just wanted to, it was my mother's birthday on Thursday, my wife, so I wanted to wish her a happy birthday. It was great to spend a lot of time with her this weekend. And as for some of the work I've been doing, a lot of it's been with the friends of Parks and Community Services. And so I just wanted to remind or let people know that the Cesta Chavez Award are coming up soon. And if people either here, here at the council meeting or out there in the community know a people, know a youth that has been doing good work, an adult mentor, an organization or a business or anybody in the education field, please, you know, nominate these amazing, our amazing community members. There's so many that deserve so much recognition. And so I'm hoping that, that if you know, if you think of somebody, please nominate them. The nomination forms are due by the 25th at 5:00 PM. And you can find the form on the fund guide from Parks and Recs. So make sure if you, if you want to nominate someone or you can also reach out to me. And we, we having the downtown specific plan on Thursday, 5:30, we invite the community to come in to help us with this process as well to talk about what they want to see, what they want to see in their downtown. And so that's Thursday at 5:30. I also forgot to mention that the Cesta Chavez Award on March 28th, they start at 6:00 PM with DJ Vote. And then the, the show starts at 6:30. And then finally, we're, we're doing a lot of work for Nerdville already. So I'd like to just invite the entire community, if there's anybody that would like to volunteer or help us with the event, you want to be part of a committee, please feel free to reach out and we're happy to plug you in somewhere. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kidos Carter.
Mayor, on Friday, I attended an event, I'm not sure if you can all hear me. I attended an event hosted by Equity Transit on the importance of public transit and also recognizing the work by Rosa Parks. And it was a really lovely event. I just want to remind folks to continue to social distance and wear their masks and stay safe out there. As we saw the Omicron numbers rising and that is all I have to report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dutra.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. That's a very nice color on you today. I have nothing to report. I hope everyone's doing well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dutra. Councilman Hearst.
Thank you very much, mayor. I post Happy Lunar New Year to our friends and Happy Groundhog's Day as well. You know, some people do celebrate those historic moments. I was able to attend the Mellow Center along with the mayor and gosh, I can't remember who all was there. Mellow Center, JPA meeting and it was, it's always informative to try and figure out how to provide public access to the jewel of Watsonville and Watsonville High as well in the Mellow Center. And we're always trying to figure out how that we may be able to use that facility publicly in addition to the high school usage in a more efficient manner. I was also able to participate in the Library Finance Authority on the 26th. And I think we're in good shape there, but it's always, there's never enough money to go around and we have to, of course, you know, make sure that we have our adequate funding for the library. Community Traffic Safety Meeting was another meeting I attended and where we talked about community traffic safety and all the impediments and the progress improvements we've made in the city. Oh yes, my wife also had a birthday too. And congratulations to Amanda and Wendy being January born and February too. How about that downtown specific plan authority meeting that's coming up? This is a chance for the public to weigh in on that. And we've already heard about the Mental Health Advisory Board meeting. I hope that that'll get good attendance as well. This will be my last year serving on the council, so I want to make a special invitation to all the eligible voters and folks who could be voters out there in District 3 to step up. And Happy Valentine's Day to everyone as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Hearst. Mayor Pro Tem Montesino.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Today I just want to wish everyone, you know, Happy Valentine's Day, but I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I was taking notes on what everybody said and I was basically checking off things. So everybody is, as, as usual, is a, we have a well-informed and an organized city council. They're everywhere. I did attend with Councilman Dutra, the Metro Board Meeting. And I want you to know that we're working very hard to represent South County. It's kind of difficult because we're the only two and sometimes there are other people who, from North County, who may not have the same viewpoints as we do in South County because they don't live here. So we're working hard to be advocates for South County. Not only did I have my first mayor's message in the Sentinel, which for those of you who have been mayor, it was a little bit scary. My, my students laughed to me and they said, well, now you know what homework is like, Ms. Parker. And, and I do. But it was a nice message and I want to say a big thank you to staff. They have been working like crazy this week, last week, the week before that, and even more so. And I, I'm amazed at how much they get done. And if we could only document it so that people could watch it and speed it up, they'd be crazed with how, how much work our staff does for the city on a daily basis. So yes, Happy Valentine's Day, which will be on the 14th. The schools will not be in session during that day, but we will do Valentines on Friday. So always a happy one. Please make sure that you do participate in our downtown Pacific Plan as well.
Mayor.
Yes.
I didn't get to speak, mayor.
Yes. No, I hadn't forgotten you, but I just started talking. But thank you. You can always do that. Councilwoman Garcia. Councilwoman Garcia, would you like to end for us today?
Yes, I will. And the reason I didn't know you had not forgotten me is because usually the mayor is the last one to speak. And so I thought you had forgotten me. Okay, but I'm glad you didn't.
Never forget, Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. I attended nine meetings and most of them were virtual. The Community Trust of Pahravale has an Advisory, Culture and Diversity Committee. I'm one of the three board members on the committee. On February 16th, we're going to be recommending to community members to the board to approve so they too can sit on the committee. The chair who is faculty at UC Santa Cruz asked that what goal we should set for the next six months. I recommended and it was agreed that we meet with Chief Samora to discuss how our committee can work to support the implementation of recommendation number nine of the Policing and Social Equity Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations. That recommendation is about social equity. So the committee looks forward to working with the city to address this most important issue. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And as as we move forward, let's see what else. I guess we're going to move to, is there a report out of closed session?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Closed session was had on the items on the agenda and there is no action to report.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's see, we're moving on to the consent agenda. And all items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. And the mayor will allow the, the public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Okay, so let's begin then. Do we have any public speakers?
I don't see anyone. That want, who wants to speak?
Okay. Alrighty, well then I'll take a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Councilman Dutra. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions? Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, this is in regards to 8H, the Watsonville Plan Growth and Farmland Protection Initiative. I've been told that when, when asked to sign the petition that the voter was told that one of the purposes of the measure was to protect the wetlands. And I would just like someone to respond to that statement.
You would like staff to respond to that statement?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Garcia, thank you for your question. I, I can actually attempt to respond at the moment. The 2005 General Plan of the City of Watsonville shows the wetland areas around the city of Watsonville that they have already been designated as an environmental management zone, which means that these areas are set aside to be protected and preserved, which already that, that, that protection is already afforded by the general plan of the city of Watsonville. And the, the wetlands are already protected and will not be built upon because they will be preserved as a natural.
So the mayor, it seems that there's misinformation being given in terms of this measure is to protect the wetlands when in fact they're already protected. So I think that needs to be corrected in their future advocacy for that measure.
Yeah, I don't know if it's in the actual wording, but yes, you're, you are correct. That has been a part of the discussion. That, so thank you, Councilwoman Garcia, for bringing that to our notice that we have not nor ever will build on our wetlands. And as our interim city manager has just said, we are kind of prohibited from building on our, you know, our wetlands. I think we value them. So we're going to continue with our motion. Is there any other commentary, discussion? Or anything else you'd like to do with our consent agenda? Counsel? And seeing none, let's ask for roll call.
Utra.
Hi.
Estrada.
Hi.
Garcia.
Yes.
Hurst.
Hi.
Montesino.
Yes.
Kidos Carter.
Hi.
Parker.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, having no items removed from the consent agenda, we go into new business. Let me check with our interim city manager, Damaravides. Do we need to switch around the agenda? And do we need a motion for that? Just to put Nick first, because if we don't have our speaker here yet.
I'm, I would, I would defer to the city clerk as to how we do that change in the agenda. We have Cecilia Montalvo, who will be the presenter on the next item on your, on your agenda. And she's actually tied up in another board meeting that I understand is wrapping up at the moment. So if we could do that, be.
Do we need a motion?
Well, let me, let me, I think that notice was for six, let me, let me double check.
Okay.
This is for the synthetic.
So we have, we have, should we take a break, a short break?
Yeah, we have that notice for 6:30, the, the fees. So we have to wait until that time.
Okay. So we can take a short, no, a short break and apologies to the, the public. But time doesn't always work in our favor. And we want to make sure the speaker is here for our new business. And let's say, let's say 15 minutes, we're going to take a break.
I, I just need clarification. Why do we need a, a break?
Me too. We don't have, we don't have our speaker.
Cecilia Montalvo, who is the lead consultant that is helping with the hospital item. And she has the presentation and will be presenting to the council is tied up in the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, presenting on the same item. There, she just reported that she needs five to 10 minutes to transition. So if we can, if we can take a short break and then she'll be able to transition from the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting to our meeting. That might have.
Is it not possible to go on to public hearings?
It is not possible because it was noted, it was noticed to start at 6:30 because we indicated that we were going to have these items first.
Thank you, interim city manager Vidas. I appreciate your help on that. So that's what it is, Councilwoman Garcia. Madam clerk has told us that those are noticed for 6:30, so we can't move on to them without maybe leaving out the public that wanted to attend at 6:30. So what we can do is take a short break of, I guess if it's five to 10, we can take a 10-minute break and, and then move on.
In 10 minutes, it won't be 6:30.
No, the, the speaker for the hospital will be here. She's the one that we're waiting on, which is item 10A.
But, but my understanding then is she can't speak until 6:30.
No, that's not that one. Excuse me. That's not that one. It's, it is the rental fees on the sports field. It's, it's 11A and 11B. They've been noticed for 6:30.
Oh.
Yeah, 10A is not. Oh, we're just taking a short break. Do we need a motion for the break or can I just call the break?
You could. You can just go ahead and call a recess.
Okay, we're going to call a recess for 10 minutes. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation. Appreciate the, the public for their patience.
Specifically, what time should we be back?
So in 10 minutes is, let's say, five, well, let's say 6:03.
Six what?
6:03.
6:03, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay? Okay, thank you very much. Madam clerk? And take the big screen down. Super. Thank you. And thank you to the public for your patience. We are moving on to new business, 10A, contribution of $100,000 for the Watsonville Community Hospital. Speaking to this will be our interim city manager, or excuse me, city manager pro tempore, Vidas. Sada?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Yes, we have two guests that will help with this item this evening. Dori Rosinda, the executive director for Salud para la Gente is here with us. And also Cecilia Montalvo, who is the lead project manager for the Pahravale Health, this healthcare district is here this evening with a presentation. And I'm sure she's going to tell you that it was well worth the wait of the break that we just took with some good news that she will share with the council in just a moment. So Dori, would you like to please introduce Cecilia and get started?
Yes, thank you. And good evening, mayor and city council. I am Dori Rosinda, both the CEO Salud para la Gente and a board member and treasurer of the Pahravale Healthcare District Project, along with my, my colleague, my partner, pro tem city manager, Damaravides, and Carlos Palacios from the county of Santa Cruz, DeAndre James from the Community Health Trust, and Mimi Hall, previously with the, with the Health Department at the county. And, and the city, first and foremost, you city council have been a great support and help in bringing us to where we are today, which is with a formed healthcare district that was brought to fruition through legislation signed by the governor on Friday. And I just want to pause and say tremendous thank you for your support to get us to that point. And, and with that, it is my pleasure to introduce Cecilia Montalvo, who is a 30-year experienced healthcare leader with experience at Kaiser and Sutter and Stanford and others. And we are so lucky to have had her available to the Pahravale Healthcare District Project to provide us the, the leadership and expertise that she is about to share with you and to answer your questions as we are seeking your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, first, I, I really want to thank you for the, waiting for me. I am delighted to let you know that it was worth waiting for and that just moments ago, the Board of Supervisors of Monterey County awarded us $3 million for this project. So we are just thrilled, but it was, it was really terrific. And 1 million of that three will come directly from Nativity Dad Hospital. So anyway, I, you know, I have a presentation tonight that I am going to go through so very quickly with you because you are the city of Watsonville and you know so closely what's going on here. So I, I will cut to the details of where we are most currently so that we don't bore, well, won't bore you, but things you already know, you know, as you know what the project is and how you all came together to form a district. We often remind people what California healthcare districts are, but I think you are also well aware of districts. I, I, I am the chairman of the board of our local health district in Cambria, which is a very small town. And I think this is exactly the sort of situation that healthcare districts were intended to, to address. And, and then we usually, when we're going through this presentation, we always return it to the community of Watsonville. And the special needs that are faced by your population, both including the, the type of workforce, the young families and the people who are economically disadvantaged. So you know, I'm sorry, I'm reviewing things you already know. The, the bankruptcy was filed on December 6th that we all came together, decided to form a healthcare district so that we would have community governance. We finished an asset sale agreement, became the lead bidder in bankruptcy. And Senator Laird and, and Assemblyman Rivas have just been heroes for this project over the last month and, and long before that. But I really think that them carrying their legislation and an appropriation asked to the, in, in Sacramento and getting things done so quickly, it, it's just absolutely amazing what, what they've been capable of. As Dori said, the bill was signed last Friday. They think it might be a record from bill introduction to, to signing. We'll, we'll have to get that validated, but we, I've been, I've been saying it might be, I think it is. You know where the boundaries are. We're going into Monterey County. We're mirroring the Unified School District for Pahravale. I want, do want you to see this, if you haven't seen it already. The project has enjoyed just this tremendous outpouring of support from what sometimes might have been odd bedfellows. We have all of the organized labor organizations from the hospital. We have the counties. We have competitor healthcare institutions in, in, and we don't like to think of this as a competitor issue, but these guys don't always play nicely together and they've been fantastic in helping us, local employers, charities, you name it. We, we've had a lot of support. I, I will tell you a moment because I think in, in continuing to invest money, it's worthwhile understanding that there were some special circumstances that led to the failure of this hospital. Yes, it has a bad pyramid. It was terribly mismanaged as well. The most recent owner had no experience in operating a hospital. The most recent owner had no experience in operating a hospital. And the structure that was in place in terms of the lease with the real estate owner was an above market lease. So a lot of money was being paid outside and then of course COVID happened. And COVID has been extremely stressful to all hospitals, and this was no exception. But this hospital could not have afforded to bear the pressures of COVID. And then add to that, they have a billing and accounts receivable problem that cash was not coming in. Again, you probably know this, but they, they issued warrant notices believing that they would close in January if they could not meet, get a bid in place for the bankruptcy. So we, we really wanna move it past where it's been and take the standalone struggling hospital and put it into a community owned and governed structure aligned with partners. Look at a more collaborative healthcare model, addressing social determinants of health and providing a better clinical experience and better health in that community. So we've looked at the numbers closely, we, I like to think of this as a, a multi-step process. We had to convince ourselves that, that it could be done, and I would really say that's our short term business plan. I think we, we've proven it can be done. Is it a detailed business plan? No, that's the process we've gone into now. And we have some terrific resources helping us. Instrumental have been these two firms, Health Management Associates and Kaufman Hall, both leading organizations in, in the financial services industry and healthcare, and they've helped us scrub these detailed financials. Let me tell you just a little bit about the business plan. This is, again, this is not a true business plan, but this was sort of the drivers of change that we thought could impact the hospital. Kaiser, which of course as a commercial payer pays higher rates than some other payers do. They're, they are prepared to send additional volume to this hospital, growing revenues fairly dramatically over, over the next few years, and we're very grateful for that. We also have agreed with the county that this is a good location to open up additional inpatient psychiatric beds, which are desperately needed in this county and actually quite frankly, all counties. We have found expense savings, they're sort of sprinkled across a lot of things. But certainly, we got the, the landlord, if you will, to cut the rent in half. And we hope to reduce some of those management fees as well. But this sort of top, top level business plan, just to show ourselves, this is a chart that shows you that forecast against a very modest triple B Moody's credit. It just is, would it be a credit worthy entity? And, and we believe the answer is yes. But it is not a cheap project. And what, what you see here, this is slightly revised tomorrow, and Dori will see the difference between some of our recent estimates. When we, when we, early on had hoped to have twenty five million in working capital, that would make me feel really good. But I think realistically, as we've gotten closer to the finish line, I think we're, we're being very practical and put pegging that number at fifteen, particularly since Kaiser has committed some information technology, I feel better about that. But the actual acquisition is pretty fixed. The purchase price is nine, that's just what it costs to buy the hospital. But we also have to repay what's called the debtor and possession financing that was issued for the bankruptcy. And so we have to carry the employee liabilities, those are things like PTO and some limited pension liabilities, et cetera. So it's around fifty million. It, in truth, because employee liabilities are a balance sheet item and not a cash item, we can get to closing with about thirty nine million. Right now, that's, we're, we're really just every step trying to get exactly what we need when we need it. So I think we're on pace now to try and get to thirty nine million. Of the, now here, I did not replace this slide, so it's of the sixty six now with reducing the working capital of that total. In, you know, in another heroic effort by, by your legislators. And the request is being made for somewhere between fifteen and twenty million from the state budget as part of the early action on the governor's budget, and, and he's been just fantastic. The time is, of the essence, we don't have to have the California appropriation in hand, we just need to have a very positive report on where it stands and we can confirm the sale at the sale hearing on February twenty second. And this slide was a little ahead of its time, I already counted the county of Monterey in there, but I, I knew the outcome today would be positive. Super transparent, now I have to delete you guys from my window so I can see the whole thing. Super transparent about where we are. Except for the one, county of Monterey can now move into committed, so we're just under twenty million dollars that we have raised without the state. So if the state comes through modestly at fifteen, we'll be very close to the thirty nine that we need for the next hurdle. There's still, if you look towards the bottom, there, there's still a lot of fundraising to be done and very, very hopeful that, and through some sources that, that that will make it to the finish line with the entire sixty six million. And very, very, very grateful to the city of Watsonville for the participation, the leadership. And, and tomorrow, Joaquin Blind, she's just been a terrific addition to the team. You know, I always close this off by reminding people that there really, there's only one of two things that's gonna happen here. I don't think there's gonna be any other bids in court, so if we're not successful in acquiring this hospital, it will likely close. And they, none of us can stomach that, leaving tens of thousands of people without access to a hospital. But if we are successful and we know we've got the district formed and we acquire the hospital, we know that there's an opportunity to build better healthcare infrastructure for the community and to achieve the vision that these leading board members have had for better health. And with that, I just open it to questions and I know most of the board is present and would welcome questions, all of us.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump back into this and, and ask our city manager pro temp, or is that, is that it for our, the report, so we can move on to questions?
Well, we.
Or are we gonna take it in sections?
We, we actually, I like to conclude with formal business of the city and, and formalize the recommendation in front of the council this evening, which is, we are recommending that you approve a hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards the acquisition or operations of the Watsonville Community Hospital contingent upon the Pajar Valley Healthcare District Project being selected as a successful bidder for the, for the hospital.
Great, we will continue then with clarifying questions from council, and then after that, we'll move to the public and then back for a motion. Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, Cecilia, you gave lots and lots of numbers, if I understood correctly. To purchase completely the hospital, it's gonna take seventy six million. So my first question is, with, if we approved the hundred thirty and now with Monterey giving us three million, how much have we raised?
You know, I think the best way is for me to go back and share my screen again, and yes, that was fairly complex. And the original materials you may have seen talked about seventy six million. That, that would give us the luxury of a lot of working capital for the first two years. If we scrub those numbers and say, what do we really think we need and we just can't get by without it? I get to this slide right here, can you see my screen? Okay. What I changed is down at the bottom where it says working capital, we, we were thinking of twenty five million in working capital, we've reduced that. This is just what we really, really think we need. So that's now sixty six million instead of the seventy six million, but I think this is the slide that you were looking to. Sixty six million includes working capital, working capital is something that could come in over time. You'd need to feel pretty confident that you were gonna get it because working capital is very real. But when we close escrow by the end of March, you need thirty nine. So there's a, I'm just saying this intentionally so that there, it is okay for there to be timing issues and having money come in, so long as we have the money to close and know that we will be getting more. But so far, we, and this has not been updated for the county of Monterey, we have five and a half million from Santa Cruz, three million from the county of Monterey, the trust has committed four point six million. Kaiser has committed three million, Dominican at three hundred thousand, the Alliance at three million and other provider funding at a hundred and fifty thousand. So with, we're right below twenty million right now, and as I said, if the state comes through at fifteen, we'd be up to thirty five million. And as I said, in order to get it done on the twenty second of February, we need thirty nine. So we're three million shy of what we need on the twenty second, and we are, let's see here, if the state comes in, we're probably more like another twenty million shy of what we need. Overall, more than twenty million.
What I'd like to add at this time, I had a recent conversation with Senator Laird. And what he said, that he assured me that he and Assemblymember Rivas could have fifty million but not until June. And he said, and he recommended that what we could do is get a loan until then and get they paid back by the state when he's able to get it in June.
Is, is Mimi on the call?
I don't see her, let me see.
It, it is, I, I, you feel out a direct conversation with him, I certainly can't contradict that. I know Mimi has had those conversations as well. It was our understanding that we would have the money and time for closing, and closing is currently anticipated May thirty first. So it may be all the same conversation. I thought the money was coming out of the early action portion of the budget and then credited against what they call a, each legislature. Each legislator kinda has their, their dollars that they can bring home to their district and that's where it would go. I thought the early action was coming much sooner than that, but if Mimi's not on, I, I can't. Either way, I think we're okay, but I, yeah.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Garcia, have you concluded your questions?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, no, one, one, one more.
Okay.
In terms, I, I saw the list of all those that have donated, but I didn't see any individual donors. And so I was gonna ask, will you be reaching out to individual donors?
That is an extremely high priority for us. We, we had held off until we knew exactly what we needed, well, we're there now. And so I think the entire board expected to launch that effort in days.
Okay.
Because we know you have a generous community and
Oh, very generous.
People are ready to give.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from the council? Okay, see, oh, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem, Montesino.
Yeah, good evening, well, first I wanna thank, you know, you, both of you were just a group of everyone has done an exceptional job. You know, work through, you know, you know, our elected officials working through the legislative process, but you on the ground, you know, just doing the, doing the work and meeting and, and having all these conversations. But I'm, one, one of the questions that I, that I, that I have is, is you know, you laid out, you know, a, a lot of your supporters, including employee union groups. Has there been any concern from employees or, or or, or more advocacy through the Nurses Association or, or just the employees in general?
No, I, I'm not on the ground every day and, and of course, but we have heard from employees. We hear from them because we're working collaboratively with physicians and the administration. And it's my understanding that the employees desperately want this to happen. You know, obviously, they, they've given much of their lives to taking care of this community, particularly during COVID. And they want the hospital to survive. Yes, they want their jobs, but I really believe that they, they want the care for their community. So we've had tremendous support from the nurses unions, they even called in. Actually, rank and file nurses called into Monterey County Board of Supervisors and so did the California Nurses Association. So they, they have come out for us every time.
Oh, thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, with that, we're going to move to the public and please state your full name and your district that you're, that you live in. And Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do.
Annabelle, please go ahead.
Welcome, Annabelle.
Welcome, my name's Annabelle Covington. Good evening, members of the Watsonville City Council. My name is Annabelle Covington and I'm a registered nurse at Watsonville Community Hospital. I work in the labor and delivery unit caring for the medically underserved and have been a nurse there for twenty years. Two days before Thanksgiving, on Tuesday, November twenty sixth, hospital staff received grave news from the current out of state owners and their outside management company, Prospect. They said funds had dried up, they told us that without an influx of money and a buyer, they would shut the doors to our community hospital, leaving our patients with nowhere to go. As nurses, we all know that this would be catastrophic to our patients and their families. Nurses recognize that every second counts in an emergency and that the only other hospital, Dominican, is already overwhelmed with patients. And that we are still battling the ongoing pandemic as the latest Omicron variant remains present in California in the middle of an ongoing and deadly pandemic. But nurses also know that we will do whatever it takes to protect and advocate for our community and our patients. As the pandemic unfolded, the current hospital owners, Halson, did not pay their bills. They denied vital PPE and violated Cal OSHA safety laws. They put our patients, our nurses, our staff and our community at major risk. Instead of working to ensure patient safety and to put the proper funding into patient care, the owners and their management operators violated our union contract, they immediately began pressuring nurses to keep quiet with impending disciplinary action. This past Friday, we learned that SB four one eight was passed and signed by the Governor Newsom. This bill was, this bill will provide a pathway forward to establish a healthcare district, the Pajar Valley Healthcare District, which will ideally preserve healthcare access. It is one of the many, sorry, it is one step of many, but we remain optimistic. Our community deserves a full service hospital, no matter what the outcome, nurses remain committed to advocate for our patients and the community to keep Watsonville Community Hospital open. Thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle. Do we have another speaker?
Steve, go ahead, please.
Welcome, Steve. Welcome, Steve. Steve, can you hear me? Steve? Can you hear me? I don't think he can hear us.
Yeah, okay, let's go to Kelly.
Okay, welcome Kelly.
Kelly, go ahead. Can you hear me now?
There you are.
Thank you. I'm a lead lab technician at Watsonville Hospital, I've been there thirty two years.
I'm sorry, we didn't catch your name, Kelly.
Kelly Strickling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm a lead lab technician at Watsonville Community Hospital, I have worked there thirty two years. I've chosen to work there, I had other opportunities, we could have worked Dominican, but I liked Watsonville, I liked the community. I liked the older hospital, we originally started there, and you know, the surrounding atmosphere and the people that work there, it's a very good community. I actually moved to the community and raised my children here and I live there now. And I truly believe we need this hospital, we need something like you're doing right now, and I really appreciate that, trying to get this district hospital. Because we need not to worry about people thinking for profit, because profit doesn't work with taking care of patients. And we have been a nonprofit hospital before and many times we have foregone money, we have, you know, to keep the community going. So we're, we're a hospital that really believes in our community and the workers are there because they believe in the community. Because, you know, let's be frank, people can get paid and go other places to work, and we choose to stay there because of the community and the people. And we, I, I truly feel, again, my, my child has had to have an opportunity, I had to go to the hospital, that we need this hospital for our community and to make sure that they are taken care of and the way that they need to and the quality they need to be taken care of. And we need this participation and us to work together to make sure that this happens. And I truly believe, again, we don't need, we need to make sure it stays nonprofit, if we can do that, so that we can focus on the community itself and continue to expand the hospital, improve the hospital and get the quality and the instruments and everything we need to make sure that we can take care of our community the way we need to and the way they deserve to be taken care of. And again, I appreciate you guys working towards this and helping us and facilitating this to make. And again, I appreciate you guys working towards this and helping us and facilitating this to make sure that we can try to get this money and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kellen. Did we get Steve back here?
No, we didn't.
Okay, so something going on. All right.
Oh, hold on, he just raised his hand. Let me try to get.
Okay, very good.
Steve, go ahead.
Welcome, Steve.
It's, it's not letting me change him to a panelist. With him, I can't just allow him to speak. But is, there's something going on with the with the system?
I don't know if it's the system or his computer. Cause he was looking. Okay. Take another moment. And then we're gonna move on. Um, okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, so I'm coming back to the council. Um, oh.
I'm here.
There he is, the voice of Steve.
It finally worked. Yes, Steve Trejo Cabrillo, trustee, District 7. Um, I can't even begin to express my shock at what Ms. Covington said about what happened to our community hospital in November, but it's just proof that, uh, as I've suspected for many years, pure capitalism just doesn't work in healthcare. And trying to run community hospital here in Watsonville as a money-making operation to create a profit is ridiculous. Uh, we have too many people who are either non-insured or have very little insurance come to the hospital where they have COVID-19 or they've injured themselves in the kitchen or whatever it is, whatever they need medical help for. And they can't pay the full amount the hospital wants. We need to understand that we have needed this for some time. Thank you, Senator Laird. Thank you, Assemblyman Rivas. Thank you, Governor. Governor Newsom, who has actually come to our rescue to make sure this works. So what I'm telling, um, the panelists is, look, if we want to go to individual donors, we need to consider going to the major, um, manu, the major employers, including the growers, Mr. Driscoll, for example, to ask for, uh, contributions. They have a lot of money. Even though I live on a teacher's retirement pension, I'll be glad to give a donation. Just ask me. Uh, I'll be, I can't do it in four digits, but I think I can manage three. Because of the fact that eventually I'll have to go back to the hospital. And I don't want to travel to Natividad and I do not want to travel to Dominican if I need to get to a hospital, which is just a couple of miles on the other side of town. And I think probably the mayor feels that way and just about everybody in town does. Uh, this is extraordinarily important. $39 million is a lot of money and yet if that's going to keep the hospital afloat, you know, um, we need to have a GoFundMe page. We need to have a citywide bake sale. I'm sure Ari Parker would love to set that up. Uh, and we need to do these things. We need to do these things to keep this hospital in operation. Uh, literally, because folks, uh, every community of 60,000 needs to have a working, comprehensive, efficient and well-run hospital that doesn't depend on making a huge profit.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Before we move on to council for motion, uh, Dory, um, if you're still here, do you like to make any final comments?
Thank you. Yes. Uh, uh, thank you to the, the public and, um, this, the employees and staff that came to speak, they are truly excellent and have, have kept the hospital in good stead throughout these years and more recently serving us all during COVID. Um, I just, I wanted to add that, um, one of the most significant aspects of having the legislation, uh, signed by the governor and passed by uh, the assembly and the senate so quickly is really that it was a very powerful proclamation about the importance of our community. It was a clear statement by the state that the Paharo Valley, the residents that work here and live here and the hospital that serves them really are, uh, essential and important. And, uh, I just, I wanted to share that additional lens of the legislation. Uh, its practical result is that we have a district that's formed, but there is a message coming behind it um, to us here in this community. And it's, it's one that, um, I think we can all be very proud of. And I just wanted to close with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dory. Appreciate all your efforts on behalf of Watsonville, as always. So I'm going to go back to council and, um, looking for a motion from council. Uh, Councilwoman Hearst?
Yes, I'm glad to move to a resolution.
And I need a second. Um, uh, Councilwoman Kidos Carter? Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Are there any other comments that, uh, council would like to make? Councilman Hearst?
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm glad to see this move forward. I, I think that, um, we, we owe everyone a debt of, uh, thanks here and thank, uh, Dory especially for her good work and Cecilia. And, and most of all, um, Senator Laird and Assemblymember Rivas. They're, they're champions in our community and there are many champions in our community. There'll be many more champions in our community. This is, uh, essential to, uh, everyone from, uh, birth and before birth to, uh, their last final moments in Watsonville. And so it's not just a Watsonville thing. It's going to, uh, impact and affect everyone within, uh, drive time of this facility. And so I'm really pleased to see us move forward with all the partnerships that we have. And, um, we're, we're going to do what we can as a city to try and make this the, the most positive experience and long-lasting experience that we possibly can, thanks to the community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst. Uh, Mayor Protem Montesino?
Yeah, I just, you know, this is, um, a great, you know, adventure that we're, we're all undertaking. I mean, uh, to form a district in such short time and, um, thank you for everyone involved. Um, Dory, you've been a champion in, in our community. Um, but, um, uh, we, we need this. Um, uh, hopefully in the future with, uh, some budgets or considerations, we can think about, uh, giving, um, more money, um, for, uh, for this endeavor, because we need it. We need, we need it for our community. It's, uh, you know, um, because it needs to be uplifted. It's been drained down with all these corporations and taking over every few years. Um, so hopefully with this endeavor, we can, you know, you know, be equivalent to, uh, her, or all the healthcare, you know, um, uh, like they have in Dominican or the, they have in Salinas. So we'll be comparable to them. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Kidos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, like many others, was born at Watsonville Hospital and I am so glad. I'm so grateful to Senator Laird and Assemblymember Rivas. Um, I'm often very, very private about my private life. Um, I have been very ill in the past, uh, probably three to four years of my life. And I have been in and out of Watsonville Hospital multiple times, probably more times than I can count in the past few years. Um, and Watsonville Hospital, the staff at Watsonville Hospital has taken very, very good care of me. So I really hope that we can find these funds, um, to continue to allow them to take very good care of me. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, uh, comments from, uh, Councilwoman Estrada?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too want to just echo a few. Thank you to Robert Rivas for, uh, being our advocate, uh, in Sacramento. We really appreciate that. The community leaders that have come together to work on this. But, you know, definitely a big special, thank you to Dory. Um, you know, after 2019, you know, 2019 was a very difficult year, you know, and, and when the, the sale came up, uh, then and, uh, uh, you know, it, I was especially sad and for the nurses and the staff, most of all. Um, when Halson bought, um, last time, but, you know, uh, you know, we were given the second chance and I'm glad that you were there, Dory, to, to continue to lead everything. And, uh, you know, as, uh, Vanessa said, I, I too was born at the community hospital uh, many years ago. And, uh, I'm just excited that finally we'll have, uh, uh, you know, the hospital will be the center of our healthcare ecosystem. You know, hopefully we'll have a, a hospital that will help us plan strategically, you know, what, you know, what health will look like in the city of Watsonville, what, um, what benchmarks we want to meet, um, how we can work together. Um, it, it's just going to be really refreshing that to have, uh, I'm hoping a hospital that's really, really involved in the community and working to, um, uplift everyone. So, uh, thank you to everyone and, uh, thank you to, to you, Dory, for all your work.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Dutra, I saw you had your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also too want us to give my thanks out. Um, thank you, Senator John Laird. Thank you, Senator Anna Caballero. Um, thank you, Assemblymember Robert Rivas, for all the voices who just love Watsonville. You know, it's really a testament to say about our, our valley when, when leaders who no longer represent us um, go on, but still want the best for us. And, and we saw that in Senator Caballero and, and we, we will see that also with Congressman Jimmy Panetta. Um, so, you know, we have a, we have a valley that we, um, you know, having a hospital is paramount. Um, unlike, I, I don't know if, uh, Councilmember Estrada and Kidos Carter were born in that hospital, but I was born in the school district hospital. Um, so, um, and my parent, and my parents were born in the hospital off of Bruington. So, um, you know, we've, we've, for generations have depended on our hospitals here, um, in, um, in Watsonville. And I know my grandma goes to Salud Para la Gente and, you know, so I just think that it's, um, this was, this was this, there, there was no negotiation in this. We needed to have hospital and and hopefully it will help, um, you know, ease the stress from so many of our hospital workers who we've seen over the years really, um, feel neglected and, you know, not be feeling like they have a voice or being felt, or being treated adequately. And, um, that we can now move forward and treat our nurses and our, our staff, um, that, you know, run the hospital, that we can treat them in a, in a way that's humane, basically. And, um, and I, and I look forward to that and, um, happy, happy faces. So, so thank you for all the work. I know we still have to raise money. Fundraising is, is, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's not always the easiest thing to do, but it sounds like we're on, we're on a roll here and um, fingers crossed that the state will come forward with and come through with the 15 million. So. But anyways, thank you also to you, Dory, and everybody else who are sitting on this. Thamada, I know you stepped in. Um, you know, filling in the shoes of Matt. So, uh, you know, thank you for doing that as well. And, um, you know, I know you all love Watsonville and, and I, and it shows. And this saving the hospital is a big, a big win for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dutra. Uh, Councilwoman Garcia?
Uh, yes, um, as Jimmy said, his parents were born in, uh, or his mother was born in Bruinton. That's where I was born also. And so I just wanted to say in terms of history, when the hospital, after the earthquake, several years after the earthquake, when the hospital was sold and the first corporation bought or was buying the hospital, there was actually a group of community members who went and protested against the purchase by a corporation. And what we said at that time is a business, uh, does not care about, uh, doesn't care about healthcare. They care about money. And so for the 23 years or more that the different corporations have been owners of the hospital, it has shown exactly that. So I am too, as everybody else, thankful to Senator Laird and, uh, Assemblymember Rivas and all our local people, Dory and Tamara and all the team that has been working, uh, to make it happen. Uh, and I'm very, very hopeful that we are going to be able to come up with the, uh, funding that we need, uh, to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, it's been said, and so I, I did want to, um, thank, uh, our former, uh, who used to cover for us here, Assemblywoman Anna Caballero. Uh, she, as Jimmy says, she stood up for us and she is, uh, strong for the Paharo Valley and she doesn't even represent us anymore. So, uh, I, I just, I just find it uniquely interesting that with Senator Laird and, uh, Assemblyman Rivas leading the way, we really have built such a, a great group of people in, uh, in our legislature who support the Paharo Valley. And our little, teeny tiny valley here was such a need. And, and Salud Para la Gente has been filling a lot of that need for a long time here. And so it, it's great, um, that we're at a point where not only that warn notice that, uh, Dory, you spoke of, or that Cecilia spoke of was scary. You know, to think about as an employee receiving that and knowing that the place in which you raised your children, the place in which you, uh, live, uh, is no longer going to have a hospital and no longer can you live here and, um, and work. So, uh, I am, I am truly thrilled and I want to support in any way possible. You know, this endeavor, as I'm sure the rest of the council does. So in doing that, uh, let's go to roll call. And, uh, we'll move from there. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Dutra?
Hi.
Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Hi.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kidos Carter?
Hi.
Parker?
Hi.
The motion carries.
Good. We had millions. We could, we'd probably give millions, but we'll wait and see what we can do. Uh, according to Steve, I'm going to have a, a bake sale, so we'll work on that.
Thank you so much to all of you at the city council and the mayor. It, it, listening, it, it has been uplifting to listen to all of you this evening, because it gives wind in our sails to continue.
Thank you. Thank you very much to say. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings, ordinances and appeals. So our public hearing 11-8, consider establishment of rental fees for synthetic sports field. And speaking to this is, um, uh, our Parks and Community Services Director, Nick Kalubekwip. Is that who's speaking or who will be speaking?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council.
There he is.
Parks and Community Services Director for the city of Watsonville. I'm actually going to, um, introduce Imelda Negrete, who's our Recreation Superintendent for our department, who's going to be speaking on this public hearing tonight.
Welcome, Imelda.
Let me actually get my screen ready and I can start the presentation. Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Imelda Negrete, like Nick mentioned. I'm the Recreation Superintendent for the Parks and Community Service Department. And tonight I'm here, um, regarding amending Resolution 179-21 and adopting, um, the facility rental schedule to include rental fees for synthetic sports fields. So our recommendation for tonight, it's, it is recommended that the city council amend Resolution 179-21 and approve the following fee schedule for synthetic sports fields, which would be $40 per hour for half the field, $70 per hour for a full field, an additional $10 per hour for field lights and a $100 refundable deposit. Um, at the June 22nd, um, city council meeting, the department's worth certain use priority classifications were amended and the facility rental fee schedule was adopted. So the schedule had more uniformity in fees and was simplified to make it more user-friendly for those inquiring about our facilities. However, it did not include fees for our synthetic turf sports field rentals. So as I mentioned, our current fee schedule does not include fees for our synthetic turf sports field. A Halls turf field, we were approached by the school district to help manage the field under our current joint use agreement. In preparation for the new synthetic turf field at Ramsey Park, this will serve as a pilot for us to test the fee rates. We did a fee comparison with surrounding locations to help us determine the fees. And the fees that we are proposing, which is a $70 per hour for full field, 40 for half a field and a $100 refundable deposit closely matched the fees currently charged of synthetic fields here in Paharo. All standard discounts and non-resident rates currently in place, such as non-resident promoter, nonprofit and continuous users would apply. The establishment of these fees would have no impact on our current rental fees and has the potential to increase our rental revenue. Lastly, per the joint use agreement, after we account for city expenses of staffing and administrative fees, the net revenue would go to the school district to cover maintenance of the field. And here is the chart. Um, you And here is the chart. You will see the comparison chart of the surrounding synthetic turf sports field along with their fees and the rental options. And at the bottom, you'll see our proposed fees that we are proposing tonight. And from the standard rates that we I mentioned previously, the nonprofits would get 40% reduction from those fees stated on here. Continuous users are those that use the field twice a week for more than eight times a month. They get a 50% discount and then non-residents would have a 10% tacked on to this fee. So once again, our recommendation for tonight, it's recommended that the city council amend the Resolution 179-21 and approve the following fee schedule for synthetic sports field, $40 per hour for half a field, 70 per hour for a full field, additional $10 per hour for field lights and a $100 refundable deposit. So council, this concludes my presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so we will go back to council for, well, wait a second. For any clarifying or technical questions at this time. Mayor Pro Tem Montesino?
Yeah, so this this is just in relations to the new field in the school district, correct?
No, this is actually we our current our current rental fee schedule does not have synthetic turf field rates. And so this is, once we get it at Ramsey, we'll have to have it in place. And so right now that the school district approach doesn't want us to help manage the EA Hall turf field, we figured it's a great opportunity for us just to do this now. And so that way we, you know, we put these fees in place so not only to help manage the EA Hall one, but also when we have Ramsay's, it'll be ready to go.
Okay, and so that so the Ramsey one is the Ramsey one, I just can't remember, is just an adult field? The artificial one? Because we have the the other ones are not going to be artificial.
Yes, that's correct. So that the field that will be synthetic at Ramsey will be a full-size adult field, but it will also be also be striped to be used as a youth field as well.
Okay, so is there now fees in relations to that prices again versus the adult fear or the kids rather be using?
We're at this point not not distinguishing between the two. If you look, if you go back to the fee comparison chart, you'll see that none of the other jurisdictions, at least in our median area, distinguish between youth fields versus adult fields. They do some of them do have different pricing for youth nonprofits versus adult nonprofits. But at least from what we can tell, it doesn't seem like there's there's a price difference, whether they're using a youth field or an adult. It's also really difficult to 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 kind of monitor and enforce that, right? So like if you if you rent the field at the at the youth rate and say you're only going to use it as as a youth size size field, I mean, we really can't can't rent the field at the adult rate while somebody is using it for for a youth game because the field is pretty much taken. So we're proposing just to have one fee for for use of the field, whether they're using it as an adult-sized field or or youth field.
Well, I just wondered because, you know, on a on a kids program, you know, they're charging this kind of rate, but an adult, you know, league, they're charging, you know, big money. So like I said, there's a to me, there's a big difference. And just because it just what they're able to use. Okay, thanks.
All right, Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, Imelda, I just needed some clarification because I didn't hear it correctly. Now, these fees that are collected, do these fees go all to the city or do a percentage go also to the school district?
So the one for EA Hall would actually, so we we're going to help manage manage it. And so after we take out our administrative fee as well as staffing, the rest of the money that we do collect goes back to the school district so they can continue maintaining that field.
Okay.
At least the EA Hall one.
Thank you for that. But that that wouldn't apply like when we finally do this for Ramsey, then those fees will all come to the city?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Imelda and Nick, with all the fees going back to the school district, are they are they holding that in the line items? So that's just for that field and maintenance of that field and improvements of that field? Or are they putting it in their general? Do you have any idea?
I'm not sure the answer to that. I could I could follow up with the school districts and ask that question, though.
It would be nice to know just about the perpetuity of of how well taken care of it's going to be over time because we know how things change. Councilman Hurst.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of management, monitoring and enforcement, can someone elaborate on the plan for management, monitoring and enforcement? How's it gonna how's it gonna play out with the public and the users?
I can speak to that. Now, are you asking specifically about the field at EA Hall?
Really, in general, how are we going to do manage any of these fields and monitor and enforce the rules and regs, which hopefully the community partners and everyone will agree to?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question. And I think, again, just like our fees, our management of the field at EA Hall is is a great pilot for us to kind of test out our our protocols and our policies for what will be the management of our field at Ramsey Park. So what we've put in place so far in partnership with the school district is when somebody comes to 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 rent the field at EA Hall, for example, they're given, in addition to all of our regular rental applications and and liability waivers and so forth, they're given an extra sign-off sheet that lists the rules for use at at the field at EA Hall. Because, you know, because it's a synthetic field, there are some additional things that you can't do on those types of fields that you can do on a regular turf field. So things like, you know, consuming drinks that are colored or have sugar that will, you know, potentially spill on the on the on the grass and then leave sticky residue or two sunflower seeds that will get stuck into the greens of the of the grass. Or things like bringing in chairs or tents that will poke holes into the turf and so forth. So there's there's that additional rule sheet that that our our team will go over with potential renters and ask them to sign off on. In addition to that, whenever we have a renter that that uses the field, Israel and his team will will meet them there at the field site and again reiterate the rules, make sure that they got everything that they that they need and do kind of a pre-site walkthrough. We'll have staff that will will kind of continue to monitor on and off during the actual activities. And then when the rental is finished, our team will will come back to the field again and do a do a post-rental walkthrough with the with the user and make sure that things are left in good condition and and so forth. So those are the protocols that we have in place today. You know, again, I think as we as we continue to to rent and use the field at EA Hall, this will be a good opportunity for us to to really dial in our policies before the field opens at Ramsey, once we get there.
Okay, Nick. Any other questions from council? Okay. So having clarifying and technical questions from council. And we'll go out for public comments. Madam Clerk.
Karina, go ahead.
Oh, there she is. Welcome, Karina.
Hi, my name is Karina Moreno and I am from District 5. And I am very much for parks and finding funding for parks. But it seems to me a little bit redundant after having a discussion around the hospital and how community structures should not be capitalized, that we are now discussing capitalizing on fields in a low-income community where the household median income is $51,500 and on top of that, capitalizing on public schools fields. Also, I just wanted to, you know, bring up that comparatively, all of the Watsonville fields at Watsonville High School, EA Hall, and now Ramsey Park, the fees are more expensive than all the other city parks on that chart. And so I am, again, I'm very much for finding the funding for parks. But I don't, I'm not sure if this is exactly the way to go about that. And that is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Our next speaker.
Steve.
I have to agree with Karina. I think she makes a good deal of sense. I understand we wanted to charge money, especially for those who feel impunity if they do damage to the fields. But on the other hand, our athletic fields are we're opening them up. And they are, of course, located in neighborhoods that don't make a lot of money. These are PR, our residents are not high-income and it does seem to be, I like great with with Karina, I agree with her. We need to find other ways also to pay to maintain the fields and but I am glad that we are working with the school district to to find solutions in order to offer these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any other speakers?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council. For a motion, is there anyone who would like to speak to a motion? Councilman Estrada?
I'll second.
Motion there.
Okay, and was that Councilman Dutra for a second? Okay, any other just further discussion from council at this time? Councilman Estrada? And then Councilman Dutra and then Councilman Hurst.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the the opportunity to ask questions. Imelda, I have one clarifying question. Will the when not in use or when nobody signs up to use the field, will it be closed? Will it be open to the community?
You know, actually, that's question. I'm Nick. I don't know if Nick is still on.
Sure, I can I can help answer that. Yeah, so the field at EA Hall, the district has has made a really clear point to make sure that that field is open and available to the community when it's not reserved or used for school activities. Because it was built with Measure L funds, the PBUSD has been really adamant to make sure that that is available as a community resource and and open and available to all. So and again, as part of our joint use agreement, that field along with the other fields at that site are are open outside of school hours to the community.
Okay, perfect. And then how much does it cost to like to renovate? And how long does what's the the life of a synthetic field?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I believe that the new field at EA Hall, and don't quote me on this, was somewhere in the ballpark of about $3.5 million to to construct. And the average lifespan of those fields is about 10 years. And so, you know, I believe that part of the district's plan in using revenue that's generated from rentals is to is to help with that replacement down the road when once that's needed.
Right. Yeah, that's really to the heart of my point is that I know some some of these fees are actually, you know, I think maybe outside the reach of certain people, but they're there for a reason. And I think the reason is because we want to keep these sort of resources around for a really long time and they have to be repaired after a certain amount of wear and tear. So it is important to sort of save up, be able to fix and upgrade. You know, I guess my my only suggestion that I would make is if there really are members of the community or organizations or teams that are having a hard time paying for the fee, you know, I think we can get creative, you know, maybe if they offered a like a cleanup day or something, you know, in lieu of paving, if they went around the neighborhood, if they ran run around EA Hall to clean, pick up every piece of garbage, I think that'd be a great, you know, sort of way to to give back, even though maybe they may not have money. But, you know, I I I sort of, my hope is that we'll be equitable and we'll be able to help everyone who wants to use the field. So this one, EA Hall and Ramsey, so I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully, we can take care of these fields and they'll be around for a really, really, really long time. So thank you for your work, Imelda, and your work on this too, Nick. Thank you.
Councilman Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to go see the fields over at EA Hall. They're beautiful. I I mean, it's a whole different experience and the kids are actually playing on them now. So I know my school at Lakeview Middle School, we got beat pretty bad by EA Hall. So I feel like home home field advantage really worked in their favor. But the experience that the kids are having on them are is amazing. So I'm really, they may have lost badly, but they really like the fields. So the fact that we're going to be able to have these over at Ramsey Park and have this experience for our community is it's just really, it's really awesome. And I look forward to, you know, making sure that we have more of these experiences throughout our community. So and I know that upkeep is expensive, you know, I mean, with inflation and the cost of everything, these prices might seem a little expensive, but the fields, you know, in order to upkeep them, it costs money. And you know, I think I like what Councilmember Estrada said, let's pick up some trash around the school, maybe to pay off some of some of the fees. I've walked around the school and there's plenty to be picked up. So, you know, maybe the staff can look into something like that if some of the if some of the leagues or the teams have some problems with raising the money to pay for the hourly fees. But great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst.
I was really glad to attend the ribbon cutting there and see that fine field. My daughter went to EA Hall and it's a much improved field. I think the secret to the sauce here will be how it gets enforced and how how the we educate the users. And it's not just the folks that signed the agreement, it's it's the fans and the other visitors too that will need to be supervised and encouraged and to do the right thing and and occasionally corrected. And that, of course, is a task in itself. And so I'm hoping that we have the manpower and we have the plan and the cooperation of the community and a chance to educate the community and and the the folks who signed the agreements as well. So this is a great move forward and the community is a richer place because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kidos Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Mayor Pro Tem was before me, however.
That's okay.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to give everyone the opportunity. So I just had a couple, well, I just wanted to clarify for the public and perhaps Nick or Imelda can clarify. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding and clarifying for the public that the rental fees are only for scheduled games. So these are only for teams. These are not for open play. So children will not be charged for open play. There will still be open play opportunities where children will not be charged.
Yes, that's that's 100% correct. So that these are only if you want exclusive use of the field for, you know, organized practice or an organized game.
Okay, just I just want to clarify that for the public.
That's a good clarification. Yes.
Okay. And and then I was just looking to see with the chart, I have the chart open and I'm looking at the there's so there's different fees for residents, there's different fees for non-residents, and there's different fees for nonprofits. And I'm wondering that in the future, so I know that EA Hall will be a pilot for this, but I'm I'm thinking that maybe in the future, when all the construction is done with Ramsey, that it may be possible that because I have a feeling that Ramsey will be very popular, when the upgrades are done, that there may be a fee schedule that might need to be changed. Is that something that would be possible in the future to make those changes if it becomes super popular and those changes need to be made? Would that be brought to council?
So I'd say yes and yes. So when we get there, I mean, I think we'll likely come back to the council and kind of reevaluate where we are and and look to adjust fees if if need be. We're also getting our rental fees on schedule with the the biannual budget. So our plan is to continue to take a look at our fees and compare them to other jurisdictions every two-year budget cycle and make recommendations for changes. In regards to the nonprofit rates and the non-resident rates and whatnot, so within our rental structure, we we offer a 40% discount to nonprofits and then resident or non-residents pay an additional 10% above the the normal rate. So all of those differentials apply or would apply to 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 the fee that we're proposing tonight for use of of the synthetic field as well.
Good, great. Thank you so much for clarifying.
And and last but never least, Mayor Pro Tem Montesino.
Thank you. I really like that you, the school district and in the city are working together, you know. It takes a lot, you know, for those two entities to work together on something. So I think this could be a blueprint for us moving forward on other potential sites. I mean, they have a lot, you know, they have lots of space around the schools that that they would have more money, they could, you know, work with us and work with us and gather more park space. And I really like where, what you guys are saying, where it's a work in progress, where, where, you know, because this is one of the first fields that you guys are managing. So there's potential for changes, especially when our Ramsey Park is renovated. So, thank you.
All right, council, thank you. Councilman Estrada?
You talk, Mayor, and then?
No, no, you go right ahead.
I just wanted to just thank the, you know, Dr. Rodriguez and the school district and your staff. And, you know, the trustees for working with us, as Lardo mentioned right now. It's a, from what I've been told, it's a breath there. So hopefully we'll keep it up and, and just thank you to, to PBUSD.
Yes, and thanks for touching on that because that's one of the things, having been a teacher in the district for 34 years, and I know we have a few people that are on council that have had a great deal of experience in those decades. But it used to be that, you know, you could play on any field in, in this, in, in the city, whether it was a school district or whether it was city. So I was, I'm really glad to see we're coming back to families and neighborhoods being able to be on, on fields, whether the cities or the school districts, because we just don't have enough. We, we need more. I want to big thank you to Nick and the crew that has continuously and built up and continues to build our, our park system. And, and hopefully the, the public will continue to support that because we have a lot of plans for growth in the next few years. Isn't that correct? So with that, let's call the question.
Okay, Dutra?
Hi.
Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Hi.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kidos Carter? Parker?
Yes, I didn't hear Councilwoman's Kidos Carter's.
Hi.
Okay, there she goes. Oh, boy. Okay. Speaking of parks, I was at science camp today. Going back tomorrow. So the outdoors is a wonderful thing because it makes you tired and happy. A lot of fresh air. So we're, I'm looking at the 7:30 mark, Madam Clerk. And it is 7:12. Do we have a, an issue with timing?
Yes. This, this is also a required that whatever time is posted, we have to have it at 7:30. So we have to take another recess.
Okay, we're gonna have to start taking bets on whether you get it right or not.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is the first time, actually.
I guess earlier is better. And then if we go past it, we're at least they're in the audience. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a 17-minute break. And we will continue with 11B at that time. Thank you, everyone. And we're recording. So thank you to the public for your patience. As Madam Clerk noted, this is when they're noticed at a particular time, that is our legal obligation to That is our legal obligation to start that conversation no earlier than that noted time. So that anybody in the public who wanted to attend knew when it was could be here to discuss it. And so we're moving on to 11B Public Hearing to consider ordinance introduction of redistricting plan. So we will have a staff report by Special Counsel Willis. And Tom Willis is here. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Let me, if I can, share my screen. Can you? Just give me one second here. There, can you see the whole screen?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is, I am standing in, my name is Tom Willis with the firm of Wilson Remcho. And I'm standing in tonight for Michael Wagaman, the demographer. Please don't ask me any tough questions about geography. But this is the second and final public hearing that the city council will hold on the redistricting process. And I just want to, before going to the public hearing part, just very, very quickly, because I know you've heard this several times, go through very quickly what this process is, the criteria, and then we can have the public hearing. The action items for this evening, as I mentioned, is number one, to conduct a public hearing to receive public input on the proposed plans. And then after the public testimony is closed, to introduce an ordinance based on a council-preferred plan. Just in brief, very brief summary, since again, members of the public hopefully have been along for the ride on this, but redistricting is essentially occurs every 10 years after the US Census data comes out. And any jurisdiction that has district boundaries must redraw those boundaries to make sure that they comply with a couple of things. Number one, that they are equal population according to the new census data. Number two, that they are updated and comply with any new laws that have taken effect. Or maybe the changing dynamics of the city require vetting of, to make sure that the laws are complied with. And we've done that all along the way in this process. Those laws include both, as you all are familiar with, the Federal Voting Rights Act, which has a good history in the city, and also the State Fair Maps Act, which is a new, it was new this cycle, a new state law that tried to open up transparency and the public process more for public participation by requiring a certain number of hearings, by requiring kind of a uniformity of approach to redistricting for local jurisdictions. We are following both the State Fair Maps Act and also the city charter. Your city charter, section 413, also has requirements in it about how the city should redistrict. And then finally, redistricting is a great opportunity for the public to provide public input, which we are, of course, doing this evening. The, their criteria, again, we've gone over this before, but for those that are new, members of the public, the, when we rejigger or redraw boundaries among districts, we have to take in mind several laws and then also just some criteria, not necessarily laws, but standards or criteria. The first three, the first two bullet points here really are hard and fast laws that we must follow. The first is equal population, as we discussed. It doesn't mean that, obviously, the districts have to be perfectly equal. As we've talked throughout this process, the US Supreme Court has permitted a total deviation of about 10%. So in other words, from the least populated district to the most populated district, they can, they can be about 10% difference and still be acceptable under the constitutional standards. Then we have a couple of additional federal laws. The first is the equal protection clause of the Constitution, the United States Constitution, which states that race cannot be a predominant factor when drawing lines. That, however, is, is sometimes contradicted by the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says in certain circumstances, you must draw districts with, with race in mind when you are trying to protect the rights of minority voters. Fortunately for us in, in, in Watsonville, because all of the districts would meet the criteria for Federal Voting Rights Act, we do not have that concern, either concerns, either equal protection concerns or Voting Rights Act concerns. Because all of the districts that we are discussing tonight are at least majority-minority Latino citizen voting age population, which is kind of the threshold for when Voting Rights Act is implicated. Then the other criteria are contiguousness, communities of interest, compactness, following natural borders, following streets, and following geography. We've talked about all these before. And then finally, this, this is a little bit different this year because of the fair, the State Fair Maps Act, but it says no incumbency term of office can be shortened. And then when you go to new districts, you should line up, this isn't state law, this is just a good practice, you should line up the district numbers that match the council members who are rolling off at that particular, or up for election at that particular election. So the city council processed today back in April, so this has been going on for almost a full year now. Back in April, city council established the redistricting advisory committee. The advisory committee, once the census data was available in September, had, excuse me, held a total of six public hearings, three before any maps were drawn so they could receive public input and discuss redistricting criteria. Then they held three subsequent public hearings when they reviewed draft maps. The committee reviewed and revised a total of seven draft maps and two publicly submitted maps. And at the end of the process in December, after those six public hearings, the committee unanimously recommended that the city council review the Rivera Plan. That was the plan that was elevated to city council. And then the city council's timetable is that it is required to hold two before it adopts in ordinance. Redistricting ordinance, it's required to hold two additional public hearings. The city council had the first public hearing on January 20th, where it took public testimony about districts. It also reviewed with Mr. Wagaman, Mr. Wagaman walked through the city council, all of the various draft maps that the advisory committee had reviewed. And then after that process, the city council adopted a motion to elevate the Rivera Plan to be the council-preferred map. That isn't final, because then tonight we have, we have the final public hearing. So city council will hold the second public hearing, again, except public hearing and public testimony. And then finally, after public testimony is closed, presumably discuss and then introduce an ordinance based on the council-preferred plan, which is, as of now, the Rivera Plan. All of this needs to, the ordinance needs two readings, obviously, and then all of this needs to be completed March 20th. If the city council adopts the ordinance this evening, then the second, the second reading, I believe, the address would be either February 23rd or March 8th, is that, I think that's right. That, I think, is it in terms of process. Just by way of introduction, the current plan here is off to the left. So you can just see it side by side with the Rivera Plan. The Rivera Plan is the current preferred map that the city council has elevated for review and adoption this evening. The Rivera Plan here, I'm sorry that these data, the, the citizen voting age data is not very clear here. But as you can tell, I just want to point out very briefly that all of the districts are well over 50% Latino citizen voting age population, which means there is no voting, Federal Voting Rights Act issue here. And then just quickly, the Rivera Plan, again, here are the total deviations for the Rivera Plan. As we've discussed before, the ideal population for each district is about 7,500 people. And here, the, the, the total deviation is 5.4. So that's actually come down quite a bit from the last plan. If you had not amended the last plan at all, it was at about 10% total deviation, right at the cusp of not being permissible under the current 2020 census data. So that, that is all in terms of my presentation. I now, Mayor, either discuss or have any, be happy to answer any questions before you open it up to the public hearing or however you want to proceed.
Thank you, yes, yes. I will open it up to city council for any clarifying or technical questions. And do we have any from council? Okay, seeing none from council at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comments.
Should I take this off, Mayor?
Yeah, you can take that off if you wish, please.
And we're going out to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve, go ahead.
Welcome, Steve.
Okay, yes, Steve Trujillo Cabrillo, Board of Trustees, District 7. Now, this may seem like it has nothing to do with our redistricting plan, but I'm going to speak to it anyway, because actually it is related. First of all, at the Cabrillo Board meeting last night, I was redistricted. And we all were, all seven districts of Cabrillo Board of Trustees. And I received the voters now in my district of District 7 of the two state beaches that are west of Watsonville, including the beautiful state beaches of Sunset and, and now I've forgotten the other community's name. I don't know why I forgot it, but both state beaches are now, the residents are now in my district. And I am in the process of introducing myself to them, simply because of the fact that they have been used to the gentleman who's in District 6 for some time. And he is no longer the representative on the Cabrillo Board. Why is this important? Well, it's important because people need to know who the representative is, whether it is state legislature, Congress, city council, Cabrillo Board of Trustees, PVUSD. This is important. And I want to point out to you that Alabama just got the thumbs up by a five to four vote. And they have reduced the influence of African Americans in the Republican redistricting plan from 27% down to 14 in half.
Name, can you like, can you like bring it back to us?
Okay. How this is important is because we need to look at the total number of registered voters based on what their ethnicity in each one of our seven council manic districts. It's important because of the fact that the reason why we have individual, one person, one vote districts, and we're no longer voting as an at-large body.
And
due to the lawsuit.
I'm gonna thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. Do we have any other attendees that would like to speak?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to council then. Looking for a motion. We have a motion, the Councilman Hearst?
Yes, Mayor, I'll move the, the our previously approved recommendation.
Okay. We have a second? Thank you. Councilman Dutra? Yeah. All right, any other comments or que, or questions by council? Councilman Hearst? And then Councilman, Councilwoman Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we have been down this road a few times in the last 30 years. And it's never perfect, and this plan is not perfect either. But it comes as close to meeting the criteria as any other plan that we've received. I don't know if there's been any new input since our last meeting or not. But I recognize that there are, you know, inequities in all of these plans. And none of them are gonna be perfect. But this one does meet the legal criteria, as I'm assured. And I think that that's probably the, the nuts and bolts of it. And, you know, folks will have to get used to some, some changes, but it's not a great big wholesale change. So that's why I'm supporting it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, I'm going to be voting no on this Rivera Plan because, for two reasons. One, the Rivera Plan ignores the community of interest of the Clifford Manor Apartments, because it divides the apartments into two districts instead of keeping it in one. And secondly, it also admits including a school in District 4, which was included in two other maps. And that's why I'm gonna be voting no.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilman Gestrada?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the committee who engaged in this work, community members that stepped up. This was a very difficult process. I'd like to thank my own representative, Maria, for doing an excellent job. She went above and beyond. And I think she learned a lot, and I think we gained a new, we gained hopefully more advocates in the community that are, you know, that will, that learn more about how the city functions. And, and I'm really just grateful for them coming, yeah, stepping in and thank you to each person and to everybody that attended the meetings. I know Steve was there, I know Rebecca was there, Lowell, Pedro Castillo. There was a lot, there was some, some good people there, but we could always benefit from more people attending the meeting. So, those are my comments, man.
Thank you. And, you know, I think at one time or another, all council members attended some of the meetings or, you know, watched them online. I do want to thank everyone on that committee, and they did work very hard. They had a lot of arguments about maps, and they had plenty of time to discuss the different choices that they had put forth. And so very much appreciation, appreciative of their time and effort. My representative was Crystal Salsito, and she did a fine job, as did all the other ones as well. So if there's no more comments, we'll go to roll call.
Dutra?
Hi.
Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
No.
Hearst?
Hi.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so then you saw the timeline from the other one. And Madam Clerk will get back to us on where we're at. So we do not have any emergency items added to our agenda at this time. Are there requests and scheduling for future agenda items that we can take note of? Okay, and moving on, I'd like to thank the public and our council. Oh, Eduardo has his, Mayor Protem Montesino has his hand up. Yes, sir, and you're talking under request and scheduling future agenda items?
Yes. I'd like to request an agenda item to talk about the charter. Where if we can bring the discussion to the forefront about if we wish to put, make changes to the charter in the upcoming election. So, so hopefully we can get that discussion going.
Okay, so Madam Clerk will take note of that. We'll have that in discussion. All right, seeing there's no one else, I don't have this, but thank you, everyone from the public. And thank you, our, our council members, as well as our staff who are staying here late. Much appreciation for your attendance, and this meeting is ended. Thank you very much.